All right, thank you everybody. We have no study session this evening, nor do we have presentations. So I'm going to open it up for any council communication and report.
Hey, I had a great experience today. I just wanted to call JJ the other day and said I'd really like to get out and see the water treatment plant. Haven't done so yet, and I know there's been a lot of discussion on it. He was very gracious in inviting me out. And actually, the president of Alliance was there. Mr. Tim, I'm going to bunch this up, Tim. Garrity was there as well. We spent about an hour and 15 minutes touring the plant. And we talked about open invitations to the citizens of Cape to come out there. And they've actually scheduled Fridays at 2 o'clock, 2 to 3. If anybody wanted to go out there, and man, I really suggest that you do, to get a grasp of everything that you're reading, and actually put your eyes on what it is they're replacing. And it's pretty obvious what needs to be replaced. I'm going to tell you right now. But the rest of it, man, we have really good solid bones in that treatment plant. And so I think as we're going forward, as we're looking at those options, to me, the only option is to listen to our engineers and replace what needs to be replaced. And within the timeframe, that actually the mayor wrote out a very, I thought, a pretty good letter about the past, the process, and where we are right now in the present. But if I just invite anyone, and I know they do as well, to come out there, just call them. The phone number, you can get the phone number, is 334-6747. Call them and just let them know that you're coming so that they can schedule it. But it's a great tour. I highly suggest you doing that. And also, while I'm talking, also the parking wrecks. So everyone knows that the bingo world has closed. But we didn't want to lose, Noon Optimists didn't want to lose that revenue. That's how we provide for the youth sports. It's one of our, it's our greatest income. And there's some other people, other Noon Optimists, Evening and McJackson as well, that wanted to do this. Well, Scott Williams and his team, and when I just say Scott Williams, just kind of like me and the Avenue of Flags. It takes a village. But they, man, they really busted it and got all of the equipment out of Bingo World, took it to the Osage, and Friday night, they had the first Osage bingo. And I saw pictures, because I was running a golf tournament, but I saw pictures and it looked amazing. I wish Scott was here to talk a little bit about it, or anybody, Doug, talk to anybody about it. But I just commend you all, that's an income to the city that we didn't have before. And it's a way that we are serving our citizens that at bingo on that Friday night, it means a lot to them. That's like going and playing golf for me. That's something I really look forward to. And I know the citizens of Cape now still have that opportunity because of their efforts, because of parking wrecks efforts, to have it at Osage. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to put out two plugs for tomorrow. One, being the primary election tomorrow. We have some very important elections for the primary, in particular on the Republican primary side statewide, as well as county, and even locally for our state senate race. And I hope everybody is able to make it out and execute your right to vote tomorrow. The second plug is tomorrow night, and I'm going to misquote this, but it is, our police department are putting on a family night out at Arena. And I encourage everybody to come out, even if you don't have children, but especially if you have children, they're going all out to offer that to the community. I understand at 9:00 PM, there's going to be some fireworks as well, but there's going to be pseudo carnival events and games and rides and stuff that they can participate in before that. So I encourage everybody to make it out.
Anyone else?
All right. Well, this today winds down what has been a very busy primary election season. I've been in City Hall since about 4:16 PM, and I have gotten seven text messages reminding me that everybody's terrible. And so please, whenever you check your email and check your mail and you get the flyers and you get the text messages, read further into the elected officials that are applying to be your public servants. Read about their policies, their thoughts. Don't just go off of the basis of what they put on a flyer or they text you 85 times a day. So please, just make sure that as you guys go to the polls tomorrow, do some additional research, learn about the actual candidates, what they stand for, what their interests are, and how they can help the region. A lot of politics is very local, and you have to really think about southeast Missouri, Cape Girardeau, Cape Girardeau County, and the state of Missouri for the sum of all of its parts. How can these people, their policies, their interests, their ideas, push us forward to the next generation? And so regardless of what the text says, or how many flame emojis it has in the subject line, just really read into the candidate and learn about them and make an informed decision tomorrow. Because this is the best part about being in a democracy, is you get to exercise your right to vote. So please, do that tomorrow. Engage in the political process and go and enter the polls and enjoy that American process. Other than that, this has been a great weekend being in the city of Cape Girardeau. We've always got lots of fun stuff going on, things like the family night out with the police department is wonderful. And so please engage with the community and enjoy this city that we all call home. All right. Any other final reports? Red? All right. Okay, we're going to move into items for discussion. Are there any appearances by advisory board applicants in the audience that would like to come forward? All right, seeing none. Okay, we're going to move beyond that. Urban deer management program update with Police Officer Ty Metzger. Would you like to approach the dais?
Hello, council. Dr. Haskins. As you know, this is the third managed hunt started, or correction. As you know, our managed hunt started and concluded successfully. It was our third hunt this past season. And there were no reported accidents, incidents of illegal activity, or interference by residents, citizens, or hunters. For the 2023 period, the final results were 18 does, 3 bucks, 2 button bucks. We expanded our hunting locations in 2022 from six locations to 11 locations for 2023. This year for 2024, we have requested going from 13 hunters per period to 16 hunters per period after discussion with the Department of Conservation because of the parcel sizes. At this point, after three successful seasons, in order to continue with the impact of reducing property damage, deer car collisions, and the possibility of disease, we must continue to expand into the heart of the city where the majority of the deer population exist. Any questions?
You know, Ty, every time I turn around and I talk to somebody, everybody's mentioning how many baby deer they have in their backyard. And I use that as an example whenever I tell people about the need for this managed hunt program and this hunting program, because those baby deer don't stay babies for too long. And then they continue to grow. And it just is a showcase of the population that we have inside the city of Cape Girardeau. When this whole process started, I was really concerned about this hunt, because a lot of it took place in Ward 1. A lot of it took place in those larger tracts of land in Ward 1. However, it's been an overly positive experience, I believe, that we've had. You've done a great job managing the process, getting people in, getting people educated. And so I think it's a good way for us to continue on our deer management trajectory.
Any other questions from the council?
Do we need more? I mean, do we need, I mean, if you ride a motorcycle, for example, and you're at nighttime, it's very scary. I've had several people in my ward ask, what's the plan going forward? I don't know. I said, we'll find out, but what do you recommend?
Well, as of this evening, I know, I believe we're going to be reading the private property hunt for this evening. I believe it's recommended at this point, 2 acres. We did a long study on that, researching that a city such as Ladue, they're conducting their hunts on 2 acres. When I looked at the parcels that we have here in the city, we have two-plus acre parcels. So in other words, 2 acres or greater, there are roughly 917 properties in the city of Cape. 2 to 5 acres, roughly 657 parcels. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that all those parcels could be hunted, given parking lots, you know, businesses, things like that. So.
The order says for 2 acres, is that right? You said, any owner of a parcel of 2 acres?
A minimum of 2 acres, yes. So it's got to be 2 acres or greater.
I don't know, I've just, I've got a lot of emails from people that are opposed to just opening it up to that many people, because there's a lot of people at that size. And 2 acres, I mean, I'm just, I'm concerned about the deer giveaway, that they're shot, that they're not killed, and that they venture off into other properties. And then other residents have to deal with it. I understand, we have deer, I've seen some pretty good sized deer in my yard that I can figure them out on my wall. But opening it up to that many people, to me, it's almost, it's, I don't know, it's a little bit, it's a little bit extreme, I think, for just 2 acres. That's not that big, that's not that big a property. I don't know, is that, we're going to pass that tonight?
Yes, that is a legitimate consideration.
I did have one question. And you mentioned the number of parcels that could qualify, but what percentage of those do you think there would actually be hunts on? Because I assume
I, I did have one question and you mentioned the number of parcels that could qualify, but what percentage of those do you think there would actually be hunts on? Because I assume, uh, a number of them are not going to have hunts on their property, correct?
Well, and, and that's the thing, there, there's, there could be a lot of theories here. Um, again, if you have two acres or greater, at roughly, you know, nine hundred and seventeen parcels, again, what's residential, what's commercial, uh, what could be utilized, what couldn't be utilized on something like that? I don't have that type of information, but I would think that if you figured half of those were huntable and then perhaps half of that, some of those people, you know, may or may not hunt, I don't think that the percentage is going to be that great because, again, realistically, you know, a deer could run off twenty acres as easy as it could two acres.
Yeah.
I mean, there's still the what-if factor and a theory here.
Generally, some of the parameters that would be set for distances to buildings and other things, could you just sort of run through those?
For example, Ty, the, the, the process for, um, a private homeowner, uh, that have the two acres plus to, to register, to qualify for their site, if you will, to be eligible?
So what a, a private property would have to do, the property owner, the property owner obviously would be, if they chose to hunt, fine. If they wanted to allow someone to hunt, they could, but both the property owner and the hunter, or more than one hunter, if they had allowed more than one, um, all parties have to sign off on a, a form that we will provide. Each party and even per the ordinance, they're all responsible for any actions or behavior. So it's not just, well, it's his fault. No, you all agreed to this. Okay? Um, the parameters would be set where you're not allowed to hunt within a hundred and fifty yards of, you know, the churches, the daycares, um, you know, schools, which we've already accomplished that by having our hunts on North Sprig near the school. Um, and that was successful as well. Um, again, it's, the ordinance is set there, I'm not approving anything because of, again, what-if factor. So it's one of the deals where per the ordinance, what the requirement is, you sign the form, the hunter signs the form, it has the, each person's information, you know, date of birth, phone numbers, addresses, so, and they have to carry it on them, just like a driver's license. It has to be on them.
Is there, okay, so a property owner has several friends they invite in, is there a limit to how many they can have on their property, all hunting at the same time?
There, there's no limit at, at this point. I mean, theoretically, um, you know, if you had ten acres and you wanted to let, you know, two people, three people come in there and hunt at one time, that wouldn't be unusual. Uh, we have our property set like Delaware Park, which is roughly eleven acres, and we're letting two people hunt in that particular parcel as well. So that, you know, and this is also information that we obtained from Department of Conservation as to what is reasonable. So it's not unusual for, you know, one or two people to hunt two acres.
But I mean, on the public properties, we have limits of how many hunters can be allowed in at one time, correct? But you're not going to be.
Well, that is a specific managed hunt. So we allow, um, typically, some of these properties vary in size, anywhere from two to three to four acres, one person. You know, we don't want to have more than one, two people on a parcel that big just so that accidents don't happen.
But we have regulations that limit that or can, can the property owner just kind of?
No, it's going to be the discretion of the hunter, or, um, excuse me, it would be the discretion of the, uh, property owner.
Bow or crossbow?
Either or, yes.
So that form that the hunter and the property owner have to have filled out, that is in advance, they have to have that filled out?
That is correct.
Now do they, does the property owner have to report or register with the city that their property, they're going to have a private hunt in advance? Or is it just they have to have a form?
They don't have to do that. They still need to mark their property, no trespassing, so at least residents can be aware. Um, and again, uh, the hunter is going to be the main person that they have to carry this document on them, just like their driver's license. So that way, if someone were to complain and say, hey, there's some suspicious activity going on down here, if we were to show up, person comes out with their bow, equipment, whatever they're doing, they don't have it, they can be issued a summons right there on the spot, just because they failed to comply. And also it will show the addresses and the parcel size, so that way we know that, hey, this is two acres or greater. And if it's not, there again, everything, all that information's on one page, so that way an officer can issue a summons right then and there. Because they, they failed to comply with, you know, obviously having all the pertinent information on that. So if they miss one thing, they can be issued a summons.
What is the, what is the penalty for failure to comply?
Well, I, I don't set the penalty, that would be up to the prosecutor and the judge.
Is there a range? Is there a fine?
Again, that would be up to the prosecutor and the judge.
Thank you.
What about year round? Could this be done year round?
I'm sorry.
Could this be done year round? Could we have a year?
It's, it's going to follow the actual state mandated dates as the constitution sits down.
I just, once again, want to thank you for your efforts. I know you've been committed to this for the, over the last three hunts, now the fourth, looking at it, assessing it, analyzing it, revising it, getting us further. We have to do something as a city because the growth, their growth is exponential because our kill rate is not anywhere near tipping the scales. So every year there's more and more babies born and then they make more and more babies and that's going to continue until we can get a handle on this. And, you know, as, as far as the concern about, um, injured deer possibly going on to another property, I found it very telling. I mean, you provided an example just this week where.
It's happening almost daily as it is.
Yeah, with motor vehicle accidents, they're getting hit. So we're not going to keep people from driving and they're, they're getting hit, injured, and dying on other people's property. And that's only going to increase as more and more deer are out there and at the safety of the person driving that vehicle. So, um, it's, it's going to be a safety concern either way, so. And I would, some might argue less so with a managed, um, hunt with licensed hunters, so.
Ty, what was the total kill, or your totals for this last hunt?
Uh, we actually had a really good season this past year. I think, uh, weather had a lot to do with that. Um, for our two thousand twenty-three hunt, we had eighteen does, three bucks, and two button bucks.
Year before that wasn't so good, was it?
No, we were, uh, in a pretty hard drought that year. For two thousand twenty-two, we had three does and one buck.
Yeah. So it definitely improved year over year. All right, any, uh?
Just one quick note, we'll also have an acted and after action report conducted after this hunt's over with and Ty will probably come back and give the council a review about, you know, how this, this new expanded effort really went.
Yes. So, um, once these deer, uh, once they're harvested, um, you know, the hunter, they also have, uh, two days to report it to me, so.
Excellent. Any final questions? All right, thank you, Ty.
Okay.
Dr. Haskin, would you like to do a consent agenda review?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, council. We added three, four, five, and six for your review tonight. Number three is, uh, the request to execute, uh, Illinois agreement with, uh, Simo, uh, Missouri District Fair to install and operate and maintain any current proposed or future livestock shelter and accessories, uh, in and around, uh, the expo. Uh, number four, uh, we'd like now to accept the improvements, uh, and authorize final and pay, final payment to pencil construction, uh, on the city hall fountain, uh, repairs. We're excited about, um, uh, seeing that repaired. I know there were some folks that really were concerned about that last year. And of course, number five, uh, we're ready to also accept the improvements made, uh, out at, uh, Baldwin Farms subdivision. And finally, number six, uh, another acceptance, uh, of improvements, uh, to serve the Lighthouse subdivision. That concludes the consent review.
Excellent. All right, we're going to go into, uh, regular session. Can, uh, Bruce, can I get a roll call?
Sure. Mark Bliss.
Here.
David Cantrell.
Here.
Stacy Kinder is absent. Rap Pierce.
Here.
Dan Presson.
Here.
Tamika Randall.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
All right, uh, can I get a motion for the adoption agenda?
Motion.
Second, David and Tamika. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. The ad. We have one public hearing tonight, uh, a public hearing on proposed tax rates for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is there, uh, I know you're on tap to do the, do the actual reading. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about the, uh, proposed tax rates for fiscal, fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five? All right, seeing none, we're going to close that public hearing and move on to the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Young, would you read our consent agenda?
Bill twenty-four seventy-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a licensing and indemnity agreement with the Southeast Missouri District Fair Foundation relating to livestock shelters and other structures in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Hey, pretty brief. Sounds good. All right, council, we have a consent agenda, uh, ahead of you. Uh, there are a few items on it, there's the one that was publicly read. Uh, can I get a motion for accepting the consent agenda?
So move.
Second, Mr. Bliss, Mr. Uh, Mr. Nate. Sorry. Mr. Thomas, there you go. Uh, missed, that, that was good. Uh, all right, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. All right, we have no items removed from the consent agenda this evening, so the next step is moving on to new ordinances. Uh, let's see what this new ordinance, we're going to jump right in. Bill number twenty-four seventy-seven, an ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, establishing water rates and fees by amending chapter twenty-nine and providing for subdivision of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city of, city at the election to be held November fifth, twenty twenty-four, and directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election. First reading. Ms. Mills, would you like to join us at the dais?
Good evening. So we have before us, um, the subject which we just said, we are, uh, want council to consider calling an election to place on the ballot, uh, for November fifth, a general election and proposal to increase the water fees more than five percent. Um, as we're aware, the ballot measure is necessary because the city, um, has fee limitations. It states that the city shall not increase water fees by more than five percent in any given year unless authorized by a simple majority voter approval. Considering or provided that this proposal passes and it goes on the ballot, there's also an ordinance that will establish the water rates for the city of Cape and those water rates will be effective January one of twenty twenty-five. So with that, um, I can summary a few items and then I'll go into more detail with background and discussion. Um, the proposed ballot will allow the voters to, uh, consider the increase in the water fees. Um, the purpose for that increase in fees is to adequately fund the capital improvements, the operation, maintenance, the current and future fiscal years of the water facility or the whole water system. Um, the city of Cape's, uh, we've identified water system capital improvements that need to be, be done to assure continued quality of water and make sure that we have an adequate supply of water to the citizens of Cape. There are engineering studies that have been conducted. Um, they all were different, uh, areas, but they were all regarding the treatment capacity and the distribution system. And they all recommended, um, expansion of water plant one and a rehab and upgrading of our existing system. Um, the city, along associated with these engineering studies, commissioned its first ever water rate study. Um, the purpose of that water study was to analyze financial models that would allow different financial scenarios at different varying water rates in order to fund the future water system and costs recommended in these engineering studies that have been conducted. Um, that ordinance will establish water rates and they are, it is needed to, to meet the capital improvements required, the operating costs, the maintenance costs, and in order, and if we do that, we'll continue to provide quality water at a good quantity for the citizens of Cape and for the visitors that also come into the city, um, as we know every day. Um, the background and discussion of this issue, um, centers around largely, Cape is a regional destination. Uh, we're regional for healthcare, for education, entertainment, shopping. We're all aware that the population swells from forty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, finance person, right? Hundred thousand people daily, right? The average daily consumption demand for water, it, it varies between six, uh, million gallons a day to nine million gallons a day. And attached to the agenda, there was a chart indicating the growth of the water demand over the years. And we're frequently tapping now on that nine point seven million gallons a day demand. Um, the city has a water system and it's important that we think about the entire system. It has three hundred and thirty mains, water mains, three hundred and thirty miles of water mains, the distribution system. There are twenty-five hundred fire hydrants, seven pump stations, twelve storage tanks, tanks, and two water treatment plants. Um, it's important to say that there are four wells that service plant one and three wells that service plant two. It's an entire system of water distribution and treatment that we are looking at, the water rate study to accomplish our capital improvement needs. We service eighteen thousand three hundred and six water connections across thirty square miles. And during periods of high usage, the water system right now is challenged to keep up with demand, even when both plants operate, um, at maximum capacity. So in order to determine the best plan moving forward, the city, um, went down a path, uh, of, of, um, commissioned several engineering studies. Those engineering studies have been done in a series over years. The city has invested over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in these studies, um, and has solicited a couple different engineering groups in order to give us the information. Um, the recommended course of action was expansion of water plant one and a rehab of and updating of our existing water system. Um, that will ensure continued supply and quality of water to the city of Cape. Um, recently staff presented, was here, presented a PowerPoint presentation about some of the challenges in the system. I would reference everyone to take a look at that PowerPoint presentation again. It also showed, um, some of the challenges we had and some of the things we've done to correct those. Um, it also outlined the future needs that these studies pointed out to us that, that we need to do moving forward. The recommended solutions and the timeline for improving and funding the system started. Uh, we have phase one of the plan, it's in process. We've all talked about the filter gallery piping, um, the lime density system, those things are in place. Um, we're moving forward with those and those are all funded with capital improvement sales tax and other reserves that we've, we've managed to, uh, maintain during the years. Um, but there's a timeline attached also to your agenda that, that shows you the phases of how, um, this improvement to the entire water system can be done and those estimated costs during those phases in. Um, the water study was commissioned in order to analyze the rates and to model those financial scenarios that we needed to, to update. Um, the study identified that our, our current rates were modest and that it reported to us and showed us, uh, with the financial modeling, with the rate increase, the city could build prudent reserves and we could fully fund the system for future years. The summary, there's a summary memo attached that shows, if you've had a chance to look at it, it also shows, um, how we can build the reserves, it shows where the city's water rates lay in as compared to other surrounding communities, as compared to the entire state. It's a wealth of information. Um, regionally and nationally, we're seeing this everywhere. Um, cities are having to raise the rates. Um, it's a result of deferred maintenance, things that get done. Um, I, there's always a, a reluctance to raise rates. And so, uh, if you can just keep those rates really minimal and not put money back for huge improvements, then, um, eventually those things catch up. And I think that's what we're seeing across, not just in the city of Cape, but across others. Um, it's a common thing to pick up the paper or take a look at what's going on in other cities and they're all implementing, um, or proposing increased water rates in order to pay for improvements they need to make in their infrastructure. Financially, there is of course an impact. Um, one thing that's important to remember. One thing that's important to remember about how the city operates its water system is the water system is an enterprise fund. With regard to an enterprise fund, that type of fund is required to cover the cost of providing services. That also means we're required to cover the cost of those capital improvements, capital costs, debt service, and we do so by setting fees and charges. It's not a tax. It's a fee for the use of the water system. Pricing policies of the water fund are established and designed to cover the cost of operating, maintaining, and improving that water system, and it's the city's responsibility to see that those rates are set appropriately so that we can function appropriately, so that we can reserve the amount of money that we might need or plan to need in future years. It was with this water, first water study, that we were able to identify that we do have the capacity and the capability to manage the system without a huge bond issue or other things that we need to improve our, our infrastructure. The water study memo and the chart that depicts the Missouri City's water bills reports clearly shows that the city of Cape waters, our water rates are relatively low, were comparably low in the state. In addition, it also reports that the proposed increase would result in monthly water bills still less than the Missouri average. So even with the water increase, because our rates were so modest to start with, we're able to deliver economically an affordable water rate to the community. Water treatment plant, the improvements and the improvements to the distribution system total 56 and a half million in the first 10 years. Okay? After that, the projected to occur the next 10 years in 2023 and beyond, other potential improvements, and we've identified those, would be approximately 63.5. Now, this is all per the engineering studies and different scenarios and ways we might approach the needs that we have. In this first 10-year period, the recommended approach is for us to work on the treatment plant to the tune of about $27 million to improve or redo four booster pump stations at about $9.5 million, and then work on high priority water mains between 18 to 20 million. So the first 10-year plan is structured financially, cost-wise, so that we're able to address multiple areas of the distribution system and the water system, not just a single one area. We're going to improve boosters. We're going to help the water treatment plant, and we'll work on the, that 330 miles of water mains, right? The water study was commissioned by the city, and it reports that if we adopt the increased water rates that are in the study, we'll fund the planned improvements during '24 through '232, and we'll wind up with some modest reserves at the end of 2032, somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million. The study highlights that the current rates are modest. They're currently below the affordability index, and the study also reports that without the increases larger than 5%, which we need to go to the voters and ask for, attempting to make these needed improvements will completely deplete our reserves financially and would actually result in negative reserves by 2027. In other words, we can't do it if we don't do the water rate increase. The city is adopting the rates that were recommended in the water rate study. They made sense, and they are financially achievable. The city's providing two charts, which are attached to the agenda, that depict the average monthly increase of the water bills, and this is for reference for people who want to look up. It's an average monthly increase. The proposed rate increase is reflected in those charts. It's based on the use, usage, okay? So if someone who wants to look at the usage on their water bill, they can look at that average for themselves in those two charts. What you, that, and the charts show the monthly average increase is what the two charts are trying to show you. What you should know about the charts is that it's a reference, and it is an average. Each customer, depending on their usage, will see something different, but the averages give you a very good idea of where your particular usage would fall in the monthly increase when you're thinking about, about what you want to, where you want to go. In addition, I can tell you that 93% of residential water rates will increase between $8.19 and $13.89 per month. I can also tell you that if you put all the users in the city, the commercial, the residential, they're all in a pot. It's all the same rate. Everybody gets the same rate. 89% of all customers in the city will see an increase in their monthly bills ranging between $8.19 and $13.89 per month. It's notable, and I want to point that out here, that all residential and commercial customers pay the same rate for water for the first 70, 100 cubic feet of use. Above 70, 100 cubic feet, the water rates decline.
Ms. Mills, go ahead and repeat that if you don't mind, because I think that's new for a lot of people.
Yes.
That may not have understood that process, but say that one more time.
So everybody in the city pays the same rate. There's no difference between a residential customer and a commercial customer. The rates are the same. Those rates are for the first 70 ccs, 100 cubic feet. That's how we rate. That's how the ordinance is in. The rate is actually in the, per the ordinance, $3.96 per 100 ccs for the first 70. After that, it's $3.05 per the next ccf, per 100 ccf. So we all pay the same rate, but those above 70, the water rates decline. It's also notable, because it can be confusing, and I just am going to put this out here right now, that our ordinance is per 100 cubic feet of use, all right? We bill, when a customer looks at their bill, we invoice their usage in increments of 10 cubic feet. So there's some math that has to be done in order to understand these rates. It is why I made two charts and attached the agenda, because one chart is residential, which usage is way small as compared to commercial, and the commercial usage is way larger. The rates are the same. The usage differs. So that's why there's two charts. Now, it's also notable that in addition to the commodity charge, the usage charge, there is also a charge per the size of the water meter you have. It's a monthly fixed rate, and those are all outlined in the ordinance as to where they are. Yes, they did increase, but these rates, these average increasing, increases in your monthly bills that I'm giving you include that monthly fixed fee as well as the commodity charge for the usage of the water.
So the monthly fixed fee, though, isn't going up, right?
It is going up.
It is going up?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, okay, so what, so when you do the average, is there a way to tell how much that, how much that's costing the homeowner?
Yeah, so that, the average includes that fixed rate plus their use.
Oh, that, the 819, that's all in there. Okay.
It's all combined together. So they, so they, so you can look at your bill, see what you're getting now, see what your usage has been, and that, those charts that are provided will give you a good idea of what they will be. So anybody, the fee, yes, the fee is based, is a commodity charge fee, right? It's based on your usage. Commercial, residential, everybody is under that same structure. No, sales tax, no. Oh, no, no. Okay. So we'll say this. This is a lot of information digest. You'll have the opportunity, you've had the opportunity to go through it for the weekend. I do want to tell you that there's a team within the city that's been the group that's worked very closely with this. It's been the Alliance Team, and those folks are structured there in the back, myself and Trevor Pulling. We've worked diligently on looking at all of this. We've, we've used the city engineers. Collectively, there are hundreds of years of experience in water utilities and management, and that has been utilized in order to help us all come to the conclusion that we have. And the conclusion here is that this team of staff members, they've studied this matrix of issues. They've studied, looked at it closely, and we've looked at all the available solutions for the city. And we recommend moving forward with these improvements to the city water system and funding those improvements by voter-approved rate increase, in addition to the annual increases necessary to continue the fund in the Enterprise Water Fund moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to open it up for public comments. So each speaker is allowed three minutes to stand at the microphone, state your name and your address. A buzzer will, will sound whenever the speaker is up with their three-minute time. So is there anyone here to speak on this behalf? Leslie?
Yeah, I have a question. Leslie Washington, 315 North Frederick, Cape Girardeau. Will this water increase, it won't impact those of us that live in apartments where our water is included, so it's just for those that are like residential businesses and things of that nature?
Well, it will impact your rate. The landlord will have an increased water rate, and it's up to them whether or not they pass it along to their, their tenant.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
No problem.
Karen Schleyer, 36, North Henderson. I'm an engineer from Princeton University, and the joke, of course, is an optimist sees the glass as half-full, a pessimist sees the glass as half-empty, and an engineer sees that the glass is too big or there's not enough water. So I was thinking that we could also, in addition to what we're talking about, encourage our citizens to reduce their water usage. Now, the water bills tell you how much usage you have. I worked on a project with my sister when I was in college where they worked with the citizens to not build a new power plant and, and insulate their homes and do the right thing. And people, I mean, people waste water here amazingly because they have the river. They think, oh, there's all this water, but there isn't. Now, we see the problem. There isn't. There's not enough capacity for, you know, so basically, I think that we could also, in addition to, of course, it doesn't seem like a great increase. It seems perfectly fine to me, and we need to have infrastructure, and we need to think about that. But I think as citizens, we need to take this seriously and reduce our water usage. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a motion for the council, and then we'll go into our own comments. So can I, do I hear a motion for bill number 2477? All right, David, do I get a second?
Second.
All right, Mark Bliss. Okay, counsel, thoughts?
I want to thank Lisa for simplifying it for first graders up here. I think you did a very thorough job in your team, but Dr. Haskins is making us a breast of this. And I do believe, I appreciate the leadership here because we tackling the problems head on, so there won't be a problem and getting ahead of it. And so what is asking is more than reasonable. I told Dr. Haskins, it's like getting a double cheeseburger meal. That's $10 and some cent for one person. If you want to know how much the water rates, it's a double cheeseburger meal because I've got it. It's $10 and some cents. That's not your whole family. So, so thank you for your thoroughness and your leadership, Dr. Haskins, and thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this, this is not fun, obviously, having to go to the voters, ask for them to take more money out of their take-home from what their hard-earned dollars. I think historically, the council has pride in itself in keeping their rates so low, being a conservative community, so their citizens don't have to pay as much. And I think that's reflected in those charts that you gave. I mean, it's, we are very low compared to all other municipalities in the state of Missouri. And then the fact that we're, we have to raise it in order to ensure the safety of our drinking water and the vitality of the future of our drinking water, we're still not going to be at the 50% mark for a city our size, for any city in Missouri, but for a city our side, our size to not even be close to the 50% mark, even with this necessary increase, is, is pretty remarkable. I know that you guys have kept that in mind when you've been considering this, is still trying to keep our rates low, but give us the capital that we need in order to make the investment to ensure that we get another 100 years out of this next iteration of the plant. And nobody wants a catastrophe like Flint, Michigan to happen, and then we have to pump a bunch of, I mean, an overload of tax dollars in to remediate the damage that's caused. And nobody wants to really get to the point that someone's telling them if and when they can water their lawns or water their gardens or wash their cars. And so it's, I think this is necessary to, to move forward, unfortunately.
I would echo that. I think it's necessary to move forward. I think it's a quality-of-life issue, too, and it's also an economic issue. If you can't supply quality and, and consistent water, you're not going to get businesses to come here, and you're not going to get people to want to move here. So I think it's something that has to be done. I think, as Tamika said, I was going to say, you know, I, when I go out to eat, I pay way more than $10 for, for a meal, even at lunchtime usually. So I think this is a good increase. One other thing, there is a lot of misinformation that's out there on social media. I would encourage people to go to the city's website, read your newspaper, get informed on this issue. Too many times I see people say, oh, well, I saw this on Facebook, and it turns out that it is totally inaccurate. So I just would encourage residents to do their homework. You've got a number of months before the November election, and, and get informed on this issue.
I'm glad you brought that up. That was, that's just a good reminder for everybody. Please go to the city website for any official city information, third-party, tertiary, fourth-party, second-hand, heard, heard on an elevator stuff that gets printed on or posted on Facebook doesn't always actually pan out. So find, I've got a student that leaves my office every Friday, and I yell out to him, make good choices, read primary sources. And so please, I think that's a good mantra to live by. Investments in the future are hard, and so this is why we have to go to the voters. And so we have to look towards the next 100 years of this plant, the next 100 years of this community, and make sure that we make the investments as a community in that next 100 years. And so I look forward to getting this out on the ballot in November and getting it out in front of the people of Cape Girardeau. Any additional comments? All right, we've got a motion and a second on the table. Can I get, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? And the motion carries. Excellent. Bill number 2476, an ordinance providing for the levying of the annual city revenue tax, public health tax, special district number two for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. First reading, Ms. Mills, come, welcome back.
So this item is a consideration for an ordinance establishing the property tax rates for the City of Cape for the fiscal year into June 30, 2025. A public hearing is required, which we just did earlier, and it has to be completed. That's the statutory requirement. We want to set the, and establish these property tax rates according to Article LEX of Section 22 of the Missouri Constitution. So the rates per 100 assessed valuation are .3067 for the general fund, .0575 for the health fund, and .7283 for the downtown special business district. I can add explanation that may help because this is very confusing the way we do this. When we budget, and the budget closes off in June 30, 2025, we don't have this information from the assessor, and therefore, we just use the property tax rates or a projection based on what the prior year's collections were in order to budget off of. However, that is an ordinance, or it is appropriated based on approval of the budget. So now we, we have that information, and what's good about this year is not only do we have the assessments, but we also we have the assessments, but we also have the related board of equalization results, and so this is the only time we'll have to address this this year. Therefore, when we set the budget, we set the budget using the prior years, which was .3042 for the general fund. Again, it's .3067 will be the actual number now by ordinance moving forward. .0570 for the health fund, and .6789 was what we budgeted for. So the new ordinance is at .0575 for the health fund and .7283. We budgeted real and personal property tax revenues of 2.7 million for this fiscal year that was included in there, and just as an example, a homeowner that owns a house worth $200,000 would pay $138.05 in real estate tax to the city. Residents would pay $12.11 for each $10,000 of personal property tax that they own. These tax rates are basically the same as what they were the prior year, they've changed minimally in hundredths of cents per 100 assessed valuation. So in order to complete the fiscal requirements for the current budget year, it's recommended that the city council approve the attached ordinance, which would implement these tax rates for the current fiscal year ended 6/30/2025.
Excellent, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the, in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? You've got your three minutes, just address the podium with your name and address. I don't see people hopping to their feet for the assessed value, .003, yep, all right. Council, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
All right, Dave, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Mark, council, any commentary? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, motion passes. All right, Bill Number 2478, an ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from the Mary Meyer Trust for a vacant lot directly north of 331 North Main Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading, Mr. Pulley.
Thank you, sir, Mayor, Dr. Haskins. This is an ordinance accepting the permanent utility easement from the Mary Meyer Trust at the lot directly north of 331 North Main Street. This was for sewer.
Excellent. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on behalf of this, this lot and easement? Once again, seeing no one jumping to their feet, can I get, council, can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
All right, Nate?
Thanks, Mr. Dan.
Second.
Tamika, all right, any council commentary on this? All right, seeing none, council, can I get a motion to approve, say aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passed. Thank you very much. Bill Number 2479, an ordinance repealing ordinance 5666 and replacing it by accepting three permanent utility easements from various property owners for the alley right-of-way between South Park Avenue and Southwest End Boulevard in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading, Mr. Pulley.
The vacation ordinance was issued on June 20, 2023, but there were some difficulties with securing the needed grant of easements from one of the adjoining property owners. During the timeframe, one of the owners sold the property at 20 Southwest End Boulevard. This changed the ownership, which makes the original ordinance 566, accepting the three easements from the original, inaccurate. The original ordinance 566 needs to be repealed and replaced with a new ordinance, accepting the easements from all three of the current property owners for this. All easements have been granted and executed as of July 2024.
Excellent. Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, council, can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, Mark?
Second.
Nate? All right, any council questions on this? Sounds like just some property, some cleanup.
Yes, it was, sir.
Very much just cleanup there. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Bill Number 2480, an ordinance approving the record plat of Park West Hospitality Center Number Three subdivision. First reading, Mr. Pulley.
Mine were pretty easy tonight, sir. This creates a new commercial lot on Mount Auburn. This is a lot that used to be the old racquetball center.
Excellent. Anyone in the audience? Excellent, okay, council, can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Second, Tamika, council, any, any questions?
Where is it?
You don't remember the old Holiday Inn that had the racquetball center?
Right.
So there's going to be a new business right there at the front of the Mount Auburn area, so they needed to create a new plat for a new business to sit there.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Trevor, you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Bill Number 2475, an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding urban deer hunting and the discharge of weapons.
Still kind of new to this. Basically, the reason to amend this is a couple of things. One, we're changing so that our ordinance mirrors more of the Department of Conservation, so we will be taking out the wearing of the orange, because the state of, the Department of Conservation does not require orange to be worn. Secondly, obviously, there's no firearms that's going to be used here, it's going to be archery only. And that was pretty much the only two, the main topics for changing this and to control the population of the deer.
Excellent, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this? All right, seeing none, council, can I get a motion? I'll move it?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All right. All right, council, any questions?
There was never firearms allowed, right?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, can, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Any opposed? And motion passes. Excellent, thank you all very much. It appears that we have no appointments on the agenda or other business, we had nobody sign up for our, our public commentary period at the end of the, end of the evening, so the next is to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, you've taken me off the hot seat, so, thank you, thank you.